Okay, there we go. All right, so now let me call this joint meeting of the Board of Finance and City Council to order. Today is Friday, June 21st, 2024. It is now 11:39 a.m. And because this is a special meeting, we are limited to only those items that are on the agendas. So the first item on the agenda is a discussion regarding the health benefits insurance funds. This is a follow-up discussion to the executive session that was held on Monday wherein the both boards instructed me to and Corporation Counsel to pull together a resolution. So Heather or Carol, if you could put the resolution up on the screen? Okay. All right, so again, based on the conversations held on Monday, I was instructed to put together a proposal that would outline the board's expectations on the non-payment of the Internal Service Fund contributions and addressing the withholding of premium cost shares for health insurance premiums that have been deducted from the Board of Education employees. Checks have been issued for those premium contributions, but have not been delivered to the city for deposit into the general fund. So I think all of you have seen a first draft of the resolution. So I'll just walk through the first several paragraphs. You know, the first paragraphs obviously are just to set the stage as to how the city and the Board of Education have for the past 22 years funded and managed the Internal Service Fund. I think it's critical for everybody to have the right frame of mind. The Internal Service Fund is funded by taxpayers of the city of Torrington and subsidized or supplemented by employees' premium cost shares that are collected through those payroll deductions. For the most part, 85% of the fund of the funding comes from the taxpayers and roughly 15 to 18% of that is represented by employee premium deductions. As we all know, or a lot of the people that have been on these boards for a long time, know that this Internal Service Fund provides medical and healthcare benefits, including dental and pharmaceutical costs for the employees and/or their families that are covered by the city and the Board of Education Health Benefit Plans. Just to make that very clear, if I go to the doctor and I need an MRI or some other medical treatment, that bill is presented for payment to this Internal Service Fund. This fund physically pays those medical expenses. That's what it means to be self-insured or self-funded. In addition to those medical expenses that come out of the Internal Service Fund, there are administration expenses that come out of that fund. Plan administrator fees, these are the, this is the Cigna is the current plan administrator that employ a team of physicians, nurses, pharmacists, and other healthcare executives that evaluate and process the claims for both the medical and healthcare expenses that are incurred. We have a claims consultant, Lindberg and Ripple currently provides those services. Those include, you know, a, an evaluation of the claims experience, prepares cost projections, keeps employee census counts, works with Cigna on claims utilization data, and generally helps us define and calculate what the projected costs would be utilizing an actuarial calculation. We also from this fund pay a stop-loss insurance premium. This stop-loss insurance is designed to protect the fund against catastrophic claims that exceed $250,000. Obviously, you get a number of those very large claims, and we do, we get a number of them every year. It would drain the Internal Service Fund. So stop-loss insurance does provide that, that protection or gap insurance for those inevitable events. So that is how all of the Internal Service Fund functions. The next set of paragraphs goes into the budgeting practices. You know, these are budgeting practices that were established in 2002 when the Board of Finance, the City Council, and the Board of Education were going through some difficult budget budget balancing machinations that were the direct result of the practice of net budgeting some of the larger expenses and insurance was one of those larger expenses. So in 2002, it was established that both the city and the Board of Education would budget their expenses and the total projected costs, the true costs, true projected costs, or the gross amount. All of the employee payroll deductions were also being budgeted at their true projected cost gross for deposit into the general fund revenue account. This practice creates a clear and transparent documentation of the calculation of the taxpayer's share of those costs. So you have the total cost of the insurance. In this case, right now, 2024, we're talking about $21 million. Then we talk about the total employee premium cost shares that are coming in, which is, you know, a little over $2.4 million, resulting in the taxpayer's share coming in at about 19 million. The management of the budgeted expenses and revenues has always been that once those line items are populated in the budget and adopted, the city and the Board of Education on a monthly basis over a 10-month period of time would transfer the allocation in their budget into the Internal Service Fund. So 10 equal transfers on a monthly basis into the Internal Service Fund. On a weekly basis, all employee premium cost shares that were deducted from the paychecks would be required or are required to be deposited into the general fund revenue account. So the next set of paragraphs that clarifies how we budget and when that budgeting practice was established. Where we are right now at this juncture, eight, nine days before the end of the fiscal year, is the discussion regarding the Board of Education's decision to withhold their final payment of the proportional share of the medical and healthcare benefit obligation into the Internal Service Fund. That is 1,393,000 and change, almost $1.4 million. The board has also unilaterally withheld the premium cost shares that have been deducted from their employees' paychecks. I believe there are a total of 16 checks that were actually cut from the payroll account and are being held somewhere in the Board of Education's offices, not delivered for deposit into the general fund. And more importantly, as I explained to the boards on Monday, where where we where negotiations on how to move forward have broken down. I shared with the board that we did have meeting, a meeting, the board co-chairs, their attorney, Tom Mooney, our Corporation Counsel and outside counsel, Mike Rose, myself, Paul Cavanero, and Wendy Traub sat down to talk about, you know, moving forward. You know, where, where should we be? What should we be? What are the goals? You know, a governance document is obviously, you know, the high priority for us. But post that meeting, any effort to negotiate what the, what the goals were and who the parties to be included in establishing those goals broke down. And I would say that we are at an impasse on this at this point. At least that's what was communicated to us through the board's attorney. So based on the conversation and the instruction given to me by the board members on Monday, I'm at the now therefore clause of the resolution where the board has instructed me, drop this so I can read it, where the boards instructed me to notify the Board of Education through its superintendent and co-chair persons that if payment of all of the premium cost shares that have been deducted from the employees' paychecks for health benefit coverage through June 30th, 2024, and the full payment of the final installment of $1,393,544.69 are not received by June 25th, the city will terminate the health benefits offered to the board through the Internal Service Fund effective September 30th, 2024. And the board will be responsible for providing medical and healthcare benefits for its employees through other sources. Further, the instructions were to to develop a plan as to how those continued healthcare benefits would function during the transition period is what I'm, what I'm calling this. So on paragraph three, you see, in order for the medical and healthcare benefits to be paid from the Internal Service Fund during the transition period from July 1, 2024 to September 30th, 2024, the board must pay its proportional share of the health benefit costs as calculated for fiscal year 25, which is $1,465,401.78 for the three-month period during the transition phase. Paragraph four, that all board employee premium cost shares that are deducted from the paychecks of the board employees for fiscal year 25 shall be paid to the general fund revenue account as they are collected. Paragraph five, and there's a slight change in paragraph five to the version that was emailed to the board members yesterday. I did receive some communication from a couple of board members looking to shore up some of the transition period language. So paragraph five, if the board, meaning the Board of Education, determines that it will not make the payments required herein and the benefits offered through the Internal Service Fund are terminated, then in that event that I am directed, I am to direct the comptroller to prepare a document to, to determine first, after the payment of the claims for employees' medical and healthcare costs submitted up to and including September 30th, 2024, or at such time as the board shall determine it will no longer participate in the benefit plan offered through the Internal Service Fund. The comptroller shall calculate the portion of the Internal Service Fund that should be set aside for healthcare claims that have been incurred but not reported. That's the, you know, the IBNR that you often hear us speak of. So and then in addition to calculating what the IBNR costs would be, that the portion of the Internal Service Fund reserve that is attributable to the board, meaning the Board of Education, after an adjustment for the monthly contribution and employee payroll deductions that have not been paid for fiscal year 23, 24, and during the transition period covered for fiscal year 2025. And then that calculation and report would be presented to the, to a joint meeting of the City Council and Board of Finance, at which time the boards, Board of Finance and City Council will direct the comptroller to transfer the resulting amount to the Board of Education to an account to be designated by the board. And I think that does it. So the floor is open for discussion. And I see Deb Inacito wrote in the chat, for anybody who's, you know, who's not pulling up their chat function. Two things, first, Deb Inacito does want to see the specific amounts included in the statement. The only number that I did not have included in that statement was the amount that is currently held by the Board of Education representing the premium cost share. And I can get that number, but it's, it's about $570,000. It's represented by about 16 checks that have been withheld since sometime in March. So we can certainly plug those numbers in. And then Deb also inquired about how much time would our comptroller be afforded to finalize the calculation owed? I would think that that might be a period of time post the September 30th. I lost Andrew Whit, just for the record, Andrew Whit just signed off my phone. I think it might take at least 30 to 60 days post the September 30th time period to be able to figure that out.
We could possibly phrase it as a, give the comptroller a reasonable time. Just adding that language would give an indeterminate but short number of days for her, for them to do their work.
Okay.
And it would certainly show our good faith thing, we're not going to drag this out for years. But it's hard to put an exact number of days on it.
Right.
Excuse me, if you do that, I would, I would put a stop period not to exceed something, 90 days. I mean, you do have to put some, trust me. If you don't, this debate could be going on long after we've all left public office. So I would recommend that. I do have another comment to make there. I don't know if, if somebody else wants to speak though, I'll wait.
I just have a question.
So Corporation Counsel.
First, can you turn your volume up a little bit?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
So both Mr. Anderson and Mr. Cavanero, where can you direct us to a specific paragraph where you want to put in? Because what I hear you saying is you're talking about a timeframe for the comptroller to prepare and present his report, is that right?
So what I would recommend.
Yeah.
Yeah. And paragraph five, what I would, yeah.
So right after the word report in the last line?
Yep.
Prepare a report within a certain number of days?
Either a reasonable time not to exceed 90 days or something to that effect, I think, would meet both of what we were saying.
So, so you want to just say within 90 days?
I think that would do it. And I think that would be reasonable. I mean, certainly with IBNR, that's, you know, we would rely on our, our consultant to help us determine that it's, it's, it's a a process that he's accustomed to providing on an annual basis anyway. So I would think that within 90 days would be a reasonable period of time.
And 90 days from the date of your request, your direction, Madam Mayor? Or 90 days from when? Says, so the mayor carbon shell direct the comptroller for the city of Torrington to prepare a report. I guess if we just say within 90 days, that covers it. It would be within 90 days from the date that you direct him to prepare the report.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think Mr. Cavanero had something else he wanted to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, number one, I think this document is really well done there. Whoever contributed to it, I think they did an excellent job. After many years, Board of Education work, this is well done. What my concern is this, and maybe, maybe this is just me, but it seems to me, the context of this whole, whole process, there are two aspects to it. Number one is the city, there's one which is we, the city, want the Board of Education to make good on what is the implied or the actual contract that has existed between the Board of Education and the city for the last 22 years regarding insurance fund. And then you've laid out all the steps for that make good. My concern is the next steps that happen, which somehow should be, I think, directly addressed. In this document is going to go out to whom? To the Board of Education there? That is the point?
Well, this, yes, yeah, this document memorializes what the boards have asked me to do. And by letter with a copy of this document, we would notify the Board of its.
Somehow, my gut feeling is that the second part, the second aspect of this large conversation is, the one is the make good, which I just described. The second is the next step where the board, in many ways, to many individuals, has indicated that if they are unhappy with the arrangement, this current negotiation, that they want to self-fund their insurance plan. And you know, I, I think we're, it feels like we're tap dancing a little bit around that September 30th day as to what happened, what is implied if they don't do this? You know, and what the consequences are, and what does that mean going forward for the insurance fund for 24, 25? It just feels rubbery and undefined, and I think the city should be very clear on what our intentions are, you know? And if you feel like you want this document to state, the board needs to be very clear on what its intentions are regarding, are they or are they not going to assume responsibility for funding their, their people themselves? It needs to be declared, it needs to be out in the open, and we need to have those conversations because it is a, you know, hugely important issue. And, and I think responsible leadership means that on both sides need to come together on that and state it in uncertain terms. What happens if they decide they're not going to do this? And what, our teachers need to be insured, our staff members need to be insured, and people need to know who is going to own that and, and what the terms are. And I don't think this hits those notes at the end of this document as clearly as they should. And, and I would recommend that we put a little more effort into, not effort, but consideration into taking those steps in this document. That's all.
So points well made.
It's Chris if I can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think Paul has a good point, but I think Paul, that, that, that's been unknown, right? We've, we've heard things through the grapevine as, as one does on what their intentions are. But I don't think we know. So I don't, I don't know if we can spell out what the next step is. I do think, and you made a good point in saying, you know, and I think this, this resolution makes it very clear what our intentions are. But, you know, it, I guess, I guess maybe some way that we could say, you know, obviously, it's in the best interest of the teachers, the employees of the Board of Education to ensure that they're insured and that the Board of Education is responsible for insuring their employees and should do so promptly, like something like that. Is that, is that kind of what you're thinking, Paul? Because we don't, again, we don't know. We don't know what's going to happen.
Correct, correct. And we're, we're at the, we're at the bridge here, you know? I mean, we are at this divide, this legal, this legal and extremely consequential divide here. And we, the city, have a very specific perspective, which we think is fair and, you know, again, longstanding. If the board, again, I'm just repeating, I think we should ask them to declare their intentions now at this, at this point in the process in order to be responsible.
In their, in their response.
Staff that we have to ensure, they owe us that. The Board of Education owes us that. And I think this document should hit that on the head somewhere.
Right, so maybe, maybe something like, and I agree with, maybe something like, you know, the city entrusts that the Board of Education will promptly, you know, upon receipt of this letter, you know, give us their, their direct execution one way or another. And it's the duty of the Board of Education to provide these services and these benefits to their employees.
Yeah, I would use language like needs to, needs to. We're all adults here.
Yeah.
We're all, we're dealing with people's health. They need to tell us, and I think the language should reflect that absolute declarative sentence. You as board leaders managing our children and our teachers and our staff, you need to do this. One, two, three.
So if I may, in, under the now therefore clause, on paragraph one, it states that if payment of all of the premium cost shares and the final installment to the Internal Service Fund are not made, that the city will terminate the health benefits offered the board through the Internal Service Fund, and the board will be responsible for providing medical and healthcare benefits for its employees through other sources. Hearing what you're saying, I, we can add another sentence that says it is the duty of the Board of Education to provide those contractually obligated benefits.
Is that true though, Mayor? Statutorily, does that?
Not statutorily, contractually. They've entered into.
The contract, what, what contract are we specifically? I mean, we're dealing with lawyer, legal schmiggle here. What, what contract is this?
So the contract between the Board of Education and their employees. There's a teacher's contract, there's an.
Okay, all right.
They have a contractual obligation to provide benefits.
Could you please put that in this document?
Yes.
I mean, again, legal, you know, we, we want to, and we want to, we want our staff. We do need, the people assembled on this phone call do need to know that the people on this call actually have the teachers back. We are trying to, right? We are trying to ensure that they have a viable and functioning health plan going forward and, and muddying the waters by their lack of direct statement of purpose is the Board of Education. They initiated this. I would like some language in there to, to reemphasize the fact that they initiated this whole discussion. This thing has been working well for X number of years. They initiated this, they need, they have the responsibility now to aggressively step forward to, to work with the city to figure out how we're going to deal, again, make good on 23, 24, number one. Okay, that contract with the city. And then 24, 25, what are your intentions for your medical coverage for your staff, which you are contractually, then you put that language in, blah, 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 blah. If, I don't know if you want to do this, and I'm not sure, Mike, this is more of a legal, because in, in this type of document, do you say, again, because we've, I've heard this, Steve Ibanez has heard this, you've heard this, Mayor, many times in many ways, I think Wendy Traub has maybe heard this. They have said they want to go off on their own. Okay, well, at some point, if that's what you're operating on, you need to declare that. And then let's figure this out. How are you going to do this on your own? What are your obligations going to be? What are this, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? We're here now. Let's, we got to force this issue clearly, logically, and forcefully. If we're going to manage what the city needs to do and at the same time, be very careful that we protect our teachers from their own Board of Education, if I can be so blunt.
So I think what I can suggest, Councilman Cavanero, the first thing I thought is in that paragraph that the mayor was referring to at the top of the page, in the next to the last sentence where it says, the board will be responsible for providing medical and healthcare benefits, I think it would be appropriate to insert the word solely in there. Um, I think it would be appropriate to insert the word solely in there, which makes it clear that it's, they are solely responsible. For providing medical and healthcare benefits, and maybe we add a sentence. At the end there that says, and they shall report to the City Council and Board of Finance. Um, you know, come up with some language, but they shall report what their plan is, how they intend to do that.
Yeah, and, and maybe, maybe prefaced it, Michael, something, in order to ensure that, that. That proper healthcare is provided for our staff in, in the education, you know. Public, that, that our public education employees are, are adequately covered by insurance. The Board of Education, again, keep saying, your people you represent, you, the board, their leader, you need to do this now to go forward. We'll talk to you, we wanna talk to you, but you gotta do this now. We're not gonna operate in this, you know, uh, in the ether here, trying to second guess or third guess whatever the hell your intentions are. Now. Time the people to put on their big boy pants and, and, and state, state their, their intentions.
Mayor, if I may, um, I, I appreciate what Paul Kevin Arrow is saying. Um, but I would caution at the same point not to get too wordy. I think what, um, like Magistrally is saying is add something to the end, but I do like. And, and I don't know if we can insert it in that sentence you're gonna put in. I do like the fact of mentioning that, um. They are bound by their contracts to do so. As we said, this isn't statutory, this is contractual between the Board of Ed and their employees, so. I don't know if we can, when we're adding that, and they are solely responsible, um, per, per their contracts with their. Uh, whatever, so I don't, can you add something that says contractually obligated? And I think maybe that puts on, without being too wordy, I don't, I don't think we want to get into ten sentences. My question to this document is. Is this a document looking for a resolution? Or is this a document looking for a discussion? I mean, I think it's just a document stating that the city's position at this point is. You know, here's the deal, you haven't paid your premiums, and as a result of it, this is what the city has determined has to happen. Um, I mean, I suppose they could come back later and say, oh, okay, we give, you know, we'll, we'll pay and, and, and everything. But I guess my question is, this isn't really a, you know, hey, let's have, let's have another brown meat. This is, okay, we're at the end, this is what the City Council and the Board of Finance through the mayor has decided. And we're going forward, um, take action as you see fit. But in the end, you're contractually obligated to ensure that your, all of your employees have health insurance as of, um, October first.
Uh, I disagree, Wendy, it's Chris. I, I, I think that the document makes it clear. That we're giving them the option to come to the table, make their premium payments, or at least give intention to make their premium payments. If they're, i- i- if, if they do not do so, here is what is going to happen as a result. So I think it does give them an opportunity, it's short window, but again, a short leash. It does give them an opportunity to come back to the table and say, you know what, we'll pay, we'll pay the premiums. But, um, you know, we want to have this discussion going forward, and I don't think anybody in this, uh, room would, would disagree with that, so. You know, I, I, I think it does make it clear.
I think maybe I, 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 I must have misspoke then. I'm, I'm not saying that they can't come back. I'm not saying we're at that end, we're at a dead end. I'm saying the document doesn't really say, hey, we're gonna have another five meetings to discuss this. The document just says that the city has decided that this is what's gonna happen. It, again, and it's just their next move. So Chris, I, I apologize if it sounded like I say, no, this is a dead end, they can never come back. I'm saying, I don't think this language is, hey, let's have another five meetings. This just said, here's what's gonna happen if this, the payments aren't made. Um, yes, they always have an opportunity to come back and say, um, here, we're gonna make good on these amounts that we owe. And let's, let's go forward and create that committee and whatever. I'm, again, I, I'm sorry if I misspoke or if it was, um. It was unintended to mean it that way. I'm just saying, I don't think this document says. Um, you know, on next Monday, we're gonna have a meeting, and then Wednesday, I think this just says, here's what we've decided, um, now it's up to you. You know, make good on it, and then we can go forward. If you don't make good on it, here's what's gonna happen September thirtieth. But I, I do like the idea to say that they are contractually obligated.
Alright, so what we can do is, as.
And I, I concur with.
Okay, so, based on, uh, based on what I'm hearing. The, um, that first paragraph under the now therefore. The last sentence. Would read, um, and the board will be solely responsible for providing medical and healthcare benefits. For its employees through other sources. And, uh, it would be the duty of the Board of Education. Instead of saying through other sources, uh, it is a duty of the Board of Education to provide those healthcare benefits. That are contract, contractually obligated. Uh, and to provide a report to the City Council and Board of Finance as to how those benefits will be provided. So not only.
Does it, yeah, does it make sense, Mayor, too, to just say, um, a- and I get Paul's point in saying, hey, you know. Cause if, if this, obviously this letter will probably make its way to the unions, it'll make its way wherever. Um, you know, i- is there a way that we say, again, without getting too wordy, cause I agree with Wendy, we don't wanna get. Caught in the word jumble, and then it's just more stuff to argue out between attorneys. You know, is there a way to say, you know, it's the city's intention to continue to ensure, um, you know, usher. Uh, yeah, not even ensure, I guess, usher that, um, that it's, that it's employees of the school system are adequately insured.
And I think that's where the, yeah, where the duty. Uh, lies within the Board of Education. Listen, if we were never part of the Internal Service Fund, we were never, you know, tied together with this. Self-funded concept. The Boards of Education that are fully insured or have their own self-funded. Always operate separate. Their contracts are with their unions separate from ours, their contracts with their vendors are separate than ours. Um, so, um, I don't know how much we can. Uh, assure their employees, um, that we're gonna make sure that this happens. I think what we can assure them is that we're going to provide the oversight that. Um, that requires the Board of Education to report to the city that they fulfilled their obligation.
Mayor, this is. This is Laureen.
Hi, Laureen.
Um, as a practical matter, Boards of Ed in the state of Connecticut cannot tax. So, is this whole discussion mute because they can't? Um. That they, they don't have any money unless they have taxpayer dollars, which come from the city.
They have a budgeted line item. Based on the budgets, uh, budget adoption. That has fourteen million dollars assigned to it for healthcare benefits. And those are taxpayer dollars, so if the, if the determination of the, um. Boards today is that we're no longer going to, um. Afford them or allow them to provide those services through the Internal Service Fund. They can take that fourteen million dollars and purchase insurance somewhere else. They still have the appropriation. It's still there. It's just where are they going to put it? Are they going to put it in? The Internal Service Fund and continue to be a part of this very successful. Very controlled insurance environment. Or are they going to go off and either provide their own self-funded plan or go to the full market and purchase? The funds are there, they've been appropriated to them.
Yeah, and, and, and Mayor, just to follow up on that, that's, you know, a- at the end of the day, here's what's gonna happen. If they go through their own private insurance company, number one, it's gonna result in higher, um, deductibles and premiums for. Um, those, those teachers and, and Board of Education, um, employees and, and janitors, et cetera. Or it's gonna cost the taxpayer more. And either way, either way, there's gonna be somebody upset. So I, I don't think the, the point is moot at all. Um, th- tho- those are gonna be the two results if they decide to go with private insurance. I mean, anybody who's in business or has had a business knows that. Um, that, that, that the taxpayer, as well as those, um, employees who receive. Um, the excellent coverage that the Internal Service Fund and, and the city provides through its self-insured insurance program. Um, are, are really gonna be the losers. So at the end of the day, if they go private, the taxpayers are losers. And, um, the, the employees lose, so.
And it's disappointing that the Board of Ed said in a public meeting that they don't care about the Torrington taxpayers, so I hope everyone remembers that in the future.
And, and to that point, Mayor, to both of those two points, which are. Right, right, on point. I, I would like that. I know, I know Mr. Trav doesn't like the document to be wordy, but I, I would. I would suggest this. This document exists between the city and the Board of Education, but we all know. We are public service people, we are, we are in the public. This, that, we have a reporter on, online here, this document is now a public document. I would like it noted somewhere as, as, as. Um, simply put as possible, that the city is not initiating these actions, okay? This whole discussion, this whole process about fundamentally redoing healthcare for our teachers. That action has been initiated by the Torrington Board of Education very specifically. Nothing has changed in twenty-two years of how we've done it. And it should be noted, uh, again, just as briefly as you can, that the city feels that for twenty-two years. Employees, all employees in the city of Torrington have been. Have been, um, have benefited from a very generous, a very generous, uh, healthcare package. Which is, in my personal experience, the private sector is largely unmatched even by billion-dollar successful corporations. I mean, I, I think they have an extremely good deal, uh, and I just want, I want, again. I would like our employee, all of our employees to know, we're not, this is coming from the other group. We are not doing this as a cost-saving mechanism, we're not doing this at all, but I, I would like it noted briefly here. That they initiated this action, and now we're in turmoil. It's because of actions by the Board of Education, stated or implied.
Can I jump?
Absolutely right, Paul. And we should also acknowledge, maybe not in this document, but in our discussion. Of what an incredible accounting and audit risk it is to have millions of dollars of checks cut and stored in a desk drawer supposedly. I mean, that's. I can't wait for the auditor to find out. That is really scary from, from a security standpoint. Any one of those trucks could walk away or be fraudulently cashed, and that's, that's really scary. The, the.
These are the people who want to be responsible for the healthcare of, of all of our teachers.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in, you know, just from the perspective of the mayor and I will then have to go back and. Revise this document, and I, and I don't, I think we'd like to avoid having another meeting about it, so I just wanna be clear. Um, on what revisions you want to the document in front of you, and one thing. That I might suggest adding kind of goes to what, uh, the recent discussion has been, is on the very first page. In the very first whereas, maybe insert whereas. Since two thousand two, the city of Torrington and the Torrington Board of Education have mutually benefited. So plug that date right in there to indicate right up front what a longstanding arrangement this has been.
Yes.
Getting back to that paragraph. Um. That I think is on the third page, so that, so paragraph one of the resolution piece. Adding again, adding in the, in the, next to the last sentence, the word solely, so it reads, the board will. Be solely responsible, and then to, uh, Mr. Kevin Arrow's point, add at the end of that. Line, maybe then after the word sources, put a comma and insert. And recor-, uh, and to request that the Board of Education report. To the City Council and Board of Finance, how it will fulfill its contractual obligation. To provide medical slash healthcare benefits to its employees. So that, I think, gets to the point of, you know, having them say, what's your plan? I don't think the mayor can, we can say the mayor should direct them, because she really has no authority to direct them to do anything. But put it in as a request, and then once again, you've got a request out there, and if they don't do it. Then really, they're just refusing what seems to be a very reasonable request. So if, if you all agree with that, I would suggest that you maybe handle it as. Amendment, amending this resolution to make those changes to those parts of it. In addition, and now I'm jumping down to paragraph five, insert the words within ninety days after the word report. In, in that last sentence, as far as a timeframe for the controller to prepare a report. So right now, what I'm hearing is those are changes that. Maybe are on the table to be approved by you folks, that the mayor and I then will go and plug into the, into this document.
And I think. Yeah, and I think the only thing that I would add to that is wherever, if we go back up to the, um. Paragraph regarding the board solely responsible for providing. They will add the contractual obligation to provide medical and healthcare benefits to its employees.
Yeah, that's what I said.
You did, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't be.
If you're looking for a drop, Mayor, um, or, or, this is an open meeting, correct?
This is not.
So, has it been a made motion?
If, if we're an open meeting.
We're in discussion.
I wasn't expecting to begin in a meeting.
Yeah.
What did he say? Okay, so there's already been a motion made. I, I came on a couple minutes late.
You need a motion, Mayor?
Just, just one, one more question on that clause, i- if there's a dramatic. Increase in the cost of the insurance for the Board of Education. What is our obligation in terms of those contracts of the eighty-twenty funding splits? Because we were through partial of a part of a year in a budgeting and, uh. Funding this, setting the mill rate, and now we, we have. A, a mid, um, financial, you know, change in this.
Yeah, so, um, any of the reserves that would be, um, determined would be. Um. The portion of the Board of Education's reserves, they certainly could use those reserves to offset any increase in their insurance. So if their insurance appropriation, if they budgeted appropriately. For the insurance appropriation as they were instructed to do, they should have a little over fourteen million dollars in that budget line item to find insurance. Um, you know, and if their insurance costs exceed fourteen million, certainly. Uh, through the reserves, once they are calculated. And transferred to the Board of Education would also be available for, um, any, uh, budgetary impact.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, you know, I have. I just have one more thing, cause I think what I, what I wanna do is, as you folks keep deliberating or discussing. I'd like to go to my computer, make the changes that we just talked about to the document, so the mayor can send it to you perhaps right now. So you have a final document before you that you can vote on, cause otherwise I don't know mechanically how we would do that. But the, the only other thing I had under paragraph.
We would, we would be happy to excuse you, counsel.
Okay, uh, in, under, um, well, it's actually paragraph five and Madam Mayor, I think you have five and then one and two, maybe that should be A.
A and B, it should be A and B.
A and B, so under paragraph A where in the second line, it says after, well, after payment of claims for employees' medical and healthcare costs. Submitted up to and including September thirty, twenty twenty-four. Or such time as the board shall determine, it will no longer participate. I'm wondering if what your intent is to insert the word earlier there.
Right, right, and earlier, yes, yeah.
So I'm gonna go make these changes, and I guess what'll I do? Mail them to you?
Email them to, um, Heather.
And she'll send it out.
And she'll put it up on the screen.
Okay.
Mike, 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 can I make one tweak?
Yeah.
Uh, I said, uh, about two minutes ago, you said something about you're gonna add some language about. Uh, the Board of Education needs to explain to the city how they intend to, um, fund their own, blah, blah, blah.
Right. You want me to read to you again what I was thinking?
Well, and just how, I would like language like, eh, the exact manner by which they will, again. Harder than just how they will do something, the, you know, exactly how are you going to do this? Wh- wh- which mean, wh- which is stronger than just saying how you're gonna do this. I don't want them to say, well, we'll self-fund, no, exactly how do you plan? Who are you gonna hire, you're gonna hire, you're gonna take, blah, 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 blah. I would just like to put a little more teeth into that. It, maybe I'm the only one and it's not, it's irrelevant, but. Uh, I, I just feel like you're herding cats here, and you know, you need to just keep bringing it in tighter and tighter.
What they. I would, I could just plug in either the word exactly or precisely, but I don't think.
Yes.
I don't think I wanna get too deep into the weeds about everything, what they're gonna do. I don't think I want to get too deep into the weeds about everything, what they're gonna do.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, with, with counsel on that.
All right, I'm gonna go draft it and then you'll be able to look at it again. All right.
And the only thing that I would add to that conversation is, you know, as you know, the Board of Education does not. Have to answer to, um, the Board of Finance or, um, City for any line item budgets. We have no control over that. The only thing the Board of Finance or the City has control over is the. Um, you know, the, the bottom line, what's been totally. So. To demand that they report back to us on exactly how they're going to do something, I think it's a, a courtesy. Because it provides that transparent and, um, public way of informing. All of their employees as to how they're going to ensure and how we're gonna hold their feet to the fire to ensure. That they have the contractually obligated healthcare benefits. But at the end of the day, they. It, it is something that they have the right to do without our oversight.
I, I understand, Mayor, but I, I will share with other people on this call that I have been privy to conversations. Where I have been told that the board can, the board is prepared to just self-fund themselves and it's, it's pretty easy. You know, it's money in, money out, and you know, and, and it's a, you know, and, and it's pretty easy to do. This is what we're dealing with, and I feel, uh, I feel like everybody on this call. You know, a real sense of responsibility to the people. That work for the Board of Education, who depend on this insurance plan. That the Board of Education is made aware of just how complex an issue this is going to be for them to assume this responsibility. And, and any language that can push that, uh, out there, uh, I think is worth including, so.
Yeah, and I think that Judge Magistrally is gonna try to do that. Um, you know, and I think that the, when I hear that that is the. Perception of how the Internal Service Fund or being self-funded works. Um, I think is why we're at this juncture, you know, it is not that easy. It is not. You know, there are plan administrators, there are claims consultants, there are so many other pieces that are in play. It's not money in, money out. It's, it's not that simple.
Yeah.
You know, it reminds me of, uh, a, a joke we have around the office with some of the, uh, some of the clients running businesses in town. Uh, twenty years later, you're an overnight success. Look how easy this stuff is.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah, well, i- i- if I could say something, uh, on this policy. Uh, yeah, I'm just disappointed on, on several levels, uh, around this matter. Uh, that I, I hope that we can retain insurance pool for everybody. Uh, because there's benefits and cost savings, lowering costs, and that has to indirectly affect everyone's budget. Uh, how we manage this matter. Uh, the decision, you know, th- this dialogue appears to be a misunderstanding. Of the insurance pool, the accounting, and the use of taxpayer dollars. Um, be- because of this deadline, this action, eh, it's just necessary for the. Uh, city to negotiate this, but I, I would have hoped that we could be in a position not to negotiate under threat of non-payment. Uh, in this, which jeopardizes everyone's, uh, insurance. Um, and, and that management of all those people, those teachers and their families. Um, I, I hope that we can resolve this and our, our city, uh, can, can maintain the cost savings. Uh, for, for, you know, this unified insurance pool for, for all employees. And I, I want to volunteer to be on the committee again. I, I know I have in the past, but. We, we, we need to formulate that committee and, and have those discussions, uh, with. Uh, any groups that have concerns around this insurance policy and how it's managed.
Yeah, and I, and Mr. Ibane, to your point, I, I, I think, I think it has been, um, discussed. I think it's. Uh, a- as Councilman Kevin Arrow clearly stated to everybody, um, on the last call, that. This was thoroughly, thoroughly discussed, open for questions, consulting with, with their council during a meeting. And they still just don't understand it. So I, I, I don't think we have, number one, we're running out of time, and number two. To continue to just allow them to come into a meeting. Seem like something's okay, and then leave the room and turn around and send another threatening letter to the city. I, I, you know, uh, I'm always, I'm always for trying to negotiate those things ahead of time. But unfortunately, I think they've tied our hands in this, not that we've tied our hands in this and, and aren't willing to negotiate. So, uh, uh, I, I totally get it and I agree with you because. You know, people, people are gonna lose. Like I said before, the taxpayers. And the employee people of the Board of Education are going to lose if they, i- i- if they go this other option. But it's, it's, it's been tried, it's been explained multiple times, even throughout the years. I remember three years ago having this discussion with Board of Education members. This isn't a today and last month thing. This has been ongoing for years, and if they can't seem to figure it out and they can't seem to understand it, then we have to take action. And, and, and unfortunately, that's it. So, that's, that's my.
Yeah, it's immediate action for the month end of June, but we, on an ongoing basis, we, we need to formulate. Uh, a committee to, uh, review this, uh, for all the employees. Just, you know, if there's concerns by different groups, we, we should just.
Totally, yeah, totally.
Have a working group that, that works on this insurance. If there's changes, we, we need to enact for different reasons. Uh, concerns of how the accounting process works, eh, any matters like that, eh, we should just. Uh, it would restore confidence in this insurance pool does, and we, we should, uh, just help manage. Because eh, it's, uh, we just don't want to throw away a good thing. Eh, it's working, it's, uh.
Totally agree.
Uh, yeah, let's just get organized, let's get more people to the table.
Yep, totally agree.
Thank you.
So, um, I'll, I'll fill the silence a little bit here, so, um. To that point, as I'm listening to Councilman Ibane, um, express a strong desire to continue to. Um, you know, work with, towards, you know, a, a governance document and a joint Internal Service Fund. Um, that is entirely based on this document up to the Board of Education. You know, now the ball is in their court. If they choose to make whole. This, you know, the Internal Service Fund with its final installment. And turn over the sixteen or seventeen checks that they are sitting on in a file or a desk drawer. Um, and, and. Express the strong, uh, desire to work with the city to get that. Are we okay?
Let's see, this is. This is what we're working on now, right?
Yes.
Yep, this was what's in the last email to me. And so I don't.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute myself. I'm gonna work with the judge on this one.
Mayor, do you want us to, a motion to stand at recess for a few minutes, or?
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. Do I have a motion to recess for ten minutes?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bayes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kevin Arrow. All in favor of recessing?
All right.
Hi.
All right, uh, and we'll get right back.
Yep, we'll stay on.
Okay. So, um, Judge Magistrally's amendments are up on the screen now. We did highlight the additions that he recommended. So again, um, I think, um, after hearing, um, a number of you say that. Uh, that it want, you want to stress the fact that this has been a longstanding practice. This has been. Um, you know, a, a, a practice that has been mutually beneficial. Um, for over twenty-two years. So he added on the first paragraph, since two thousand two. Uh, this has been a mutually benefited self-funded health insurance benefits account. And then moving down, the next change was, um, again, hearing the board's desire. To clarify, the expectations are, if you do not. Pay the municipality the full one point three nine three five four four and all of those premium cost shares. Um, then, uh, termination from the Internal Service Fund. Happens on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and that the board will be solely responsible for providing medical and healthcare benefits for its employees. Through other sources. The sentence added, the mayor shall request that the board report to the City Council and Board of Finance. Precisely how it intends to fulfill its contractual obligation to provide medical and health benefits to its employees. Uh, further down, um, this was, uh, paragraph five where, um, we wanted to give them a ti- a give our comptroller. Um, a time limit. You know, we want some finality to this if we are going to, um, separate. Um, so within ninety days of, uh, notice to the comptroller. That the board has determined that it will, um, separate from the city on the Internal Service Fund. Um. Then I'll notify, and there's ninety days to prepare the report. We also changed paragraph A. Um, and it was a good pickup on the judge's part. So the, the thought in paragraph A was that after the payment claims. For employee medical and healthcare costs submitted up to and including September thirtieth. Or such earlier time as the board shall determine that it will no longer participate. In the benefit plan offered through the Internal Service Fund. Uh, the comptroller will start calculating the IBNR and the reserve numbers. And I believe those are the only changes. Thoughts, questions?
I think this is a solid draft.
Yeah, I like it.
Mayor.
Yeah, yeah.
Should number three be two? I think the number is off.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we combined one and two into this one paragraph, so, um, yeah, we can correct those numbers.
But other than lyrical items like numbering, um, I think I, for one, would be comfortable moving forward.
Okay. Any other thoughts, questions, comments on the discussion portion of this?
Mayor, would it be, eh, again, this is, uh, an old advertising guy speaking, but I, I think it's really well done. I, I. Again, this, this is a long, long, wonky, wordy document as it has to be, okay? What I'm saying is, when this gets out into the public. Personally, I like to highlight, and I'm not sure if other people think that's just way overkill, but the board. Will be solely responsible for providing medical care for the employees. The mayor shall also request. That to me feels like it should be highlighted, and if I'm the only one who thinks that, I'm fine with it as it is. That would be my only. Is make sure people understand what's at stake here if the Board of Education does not move expeditiously on this.
We can certainly bold it.
That's all I'm saying, yeah. And if, if you think it's overkill, uh, you know, I'll, I'll stand down certainly, but. Um, my preference would be to do that.
Add a timeframe there as well?
Yeah, so the question was, do you want to add a timeframe there also? Eh, eh, again, I, they can certainly tell us that there's no intention to do that, but we could certainly. Put it out there that in the interest of making sure that the employees are being.
Yeah, I, I would put some sort of timestamp on it, yeah, yeah. Again, herding cats, Mayor. And you know the cats that were herding.
Yeah, so then we could certainly say within thirty days of the board's notification that it will be. Providing, uh. Medical benefits through another source that they will report to the City Council and Board of Finance.
Since it's only a request, what difference does the timeframe make? They can ignore it anyway, so I, I don't know if you need that wording.
No, all right.
You can't compel, you can't compel them, so you can't compel them to do it by a timeframe, can you?
No, yeah.
Well, the implication would be that if they don't do it by then, 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 then the city has to make its own plans. You know what I mean? We, w- w- we're totally reactive here. And, and, and so one of the ways to deal with that would be to give them, and then if they don't, then it just gives us. Uh, I'm also just thinking, maybe, again, overthinking, but, you know, if, if we go to court on this thing, um. That we, we start to build some. Um, some very specific steps here that within sixty days. You know, which would give them enough time to really think about what they're taking on, and really, you know, again, it is, it is not a. Private entity. This is, these are public officials or, um. You know, who have to meet and discuss and realize how complicated this is going to be for them. That sixty days seems appropriate, but.
I don't understand. Um, that there can't be any time. Limit to it. It has to be, it, if, if they're not gonna be covered. After that date, they have to have something else in place immediately, as does the city.
Well, the trigger, the.
I, I, I'm not sure, perhaps the city just.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, Lorraine.
On the self-funding and, and that, but all the, the numbers that are involved in that are based upon. The Board of Ed's number of employees and the city's number of employees, so it's gonna, going to affect that. But there isn't any thirty days, sixty day, ninety days. Because as of, somebody gets sick, has an operation, is in an accident, whatever, that next day has a baby, the ver- the next day. They have to be covered.
There won't be a la- there won't be an lapse. So with the way this was phrased, and we did this. You know, as we were receiving the information from the joint board meeting on Monday. You know, that if the payments are not made by June twenty-fifth, effective September thirtieth. Um, they'll no longer have insurance through the Internal Service Fund. That gives them ninety days.
Mm-hmm.
To either set up their own self-funded account or find insurance from other sources. But they will be covered through September thirtieth.
Right, yeah, the, the trigger date is June twenty-fifth, which is four days away. That's the trigger date.
Right.
For the event in the future is the September thirty date, so we could, we could just put in that. Last highlighted sentence, after the word finance. Um, ask them to report to the City Council and the Board of Finance within thirty days, or you could say on or before. August first. Twenty twenty-four. So they've got until, cause, so June twenty-fifth is the drop dead date to make the payment. That then triggers, they're on their own as of September thirtieth, so put in there maybe re- make a report. On or before August first, what they plan to do. And that gives them a little bit more than thirty days from June twenty-fifth to come up with a plan. And they may not.
I also think we underestimate the, 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 I don't want to say the power, but we underestimate the unions here. Once the unions. Get ahold of this information, um, I'm pretty sure they're gonna be lobbying really hard. With the Board of Education, so I, um, and I appreciate what, what Lorraine's saying. We want to make sure, obviously, that they get continued coverage. This is not about, you know, having them being hung out to dry, but I think, you know, the minute something would be triggered, such as June twenty-sixth. Um, and the payment not being, their decision was already made. So I think once the, uh, the unions find out about it, I think they're gonna be pretty active and involved. In ensuring that they do have health insurance as well.
So, d- do you want to do that then after the word finance, plug in? On or before August first, twenty twenty-four?
So the highlighted sentence, the mayor shall also request. That the board of, that the board report to the City Council and Board of Finance on or before August first. Precisely how it intends to fulfill its contractual obligation to provide medical and health benefits to its employees. And I think that that.
I would, I, yeah, I'm good with that, but I would put in if those obvi- obligations aren't met. Does that make sense? Like, if.
Yeah, I mean, they'll be out of contract. That's, I don't think that. That, yeah, I mean, they'll be out of contract. That's, I don't think that's gonna happen. I, I have every confidence that the Board of Education and their administrative staff recognize that they can't, they can't let their la- their insurance lapse. And here again, I mean, the short answer, the fast answer to all of this is send us the money that you already have you know, uh, encumbered in your li- insurance line item and the number of checks that you're sitting on in a file or a desk drawer somewhere in your offices. You know, that's, you know, that's the guarantee that nothing is gonna lapse, you know, and then to, I'm not sure which one of you mentioned it earlier. Yes, this is gonna cost the taxpayers more. It's going to cost the employees more, because the more you pay for health benefits, the higher the, you know, the, the contract cost is, the higher their premium cost share is. Eighteen percent of twenty thousand dollars is cheaper than eighteen percent of twenty-five thousand dollars. So to Wendy's point, y- yeah, if the unions are paying very close attention to this, that's the first thing they're going to recognize. And if there is a decision on the board, and I'm, I'm hearing there's rumors and there's conversations, you know, that are happening offline, which is all well and good. But the fact of the matter is, we run our own self-funded, uh, benefits plan. They run their own self-funded benefits plan. We're, we're each paying our own administration expenses, you know, if one plan, there's one administrator. If there are two plans, two administrators, those administration costs go up. And Lorraine is absolutely right. The larger the pool, you know, the more you can smooth those costs out. The smaller the pool, the more expensive it's going to be.
So do they or don't they want a date plugged in?
Yes. So am I hearing consensus that in that sentence that the board shall report to the City Council and the Board of Finance on or before August first, precisely how it intends to fulfill its contractual application?
Yes.
I, I would, I would support that.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
So you can go ahead and put it in.
I can't.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
My, my, if, if we put in these very reasonable timeframes by which certain actions have to be taken, my sense from my days as a board chairman was that if this does go legal, it does go to court, that it serves us well to have established certain benchmarks that are reasonable and practical. And, um, if they ignore them, it is to their detriment.
Right.
Scenario. That's been my experience at least.
All right, well, then if there's no further discussion and you're comfortable with the document that's been presented, then I would move into item number two. And I would be looking for a motion. This is for the City Council. Um, I am looking for a motion to approve this resolution. Um, as modified. Do you have a motion? Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Okay.
And I hear Councilman Kevin Arrow. Uh, any final questions or comments? Hearing none, then to the council members. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so I have, um, four in favor, any opposed?
I, I have to abstain.
The record. Yeah. Mayor. All right, so for the record, I have one abstention. Um, thank you, Councilman Iveyne. And Councilwoman Rouatt is on the line. I should have let you know. Go ahead, you had a comment?
I'll kind of just wanted to, for the record, I want to make sure my vote was noted, um, approved.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm moving into item three. Uh, I need, uh, and I will entertain a motion from a member of the Board of Finance and second to approve the, um, resolution as presented.
So moved.
I, I, it's, uh, Mr. Wright, and I heard Mr. Bayes. Um, all right, any questions or comments before I call that motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
And, any opposed? Any abstentions?
One abstention.
All right, yeah, thank you. Your abstention is noted on the council and, um, there are no abstentions for the Board of Finance. All right, well, because it's a special meeting, um, and there's no further business before the board, um, I'm gonna call for a motion to adjourn. I will just let the board know that based on the resolution you've approved, I will do the, demand a letter to the Board of, um, Education with the deadline of June twenty-fifth, and we'll report to you, um, what the response is to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, when will this be executed today?
Uh, so it doesn't need to be executed because it's a resolution. Your motion serves as execution. Um, so it is an
Well, when, when will this be sent?
Today.
Yeah, it must be today, because the
Today.
Thank you.
Yes, we're sending it out today with the demand letter. Um, that'll reference the resolution that was adopted. Um, all right, so, um, I saw Mr. Anderson, um, move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much for your patience and um, attention. Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
Yep, see ya.